Thank you and welcome to the December 8th Mesa City Council meeting. I'll note for the record that all of our council is present on this virtual meeting platform. At this council meeting, we are taking comments both over the telephone and the Internet. You can find multiple ways to participate on the first page of the council agenda. Additionally, if you want to speak, please submit a blue card at least an hour before the meeting. Again, you can find all of that information on the first page of the agenda for this meeting or at mesaaz dot gov forward slash blue card. We'll begin our meeting this evening with an invocation offered by Rabbi Leibel Blotner with the Shabbat Jewish Center of Mesa, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Almighty God, we turn to you at a time of tremendous challenges, hurt, and division. The members of the City Council and Honorable Mayor are here to provide just laws and legislation to bring healing and happiness. Jeremiah the Prophet says, "Seek the welfare of the city you dwell; pray to the Lord, for your welfare depends on their welfare." We ask of the Almighty, "Jubile will that blessings should be given to the assembled; they should have the wisdom, strength, and conviction to render enactments for the benefit of the community." As we stand days away from the holiday of Hanukkah, the festival of lights, marking the Jewish people's victory over tyranny, as well as the miracle of oil, we pray these days of hardships should be transformed to days of light, clarity in our lives, peace and prosperity for all. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again, Rabbi, for that great invocation. Begin our meeting, the first item on our agenda is awards and recognitions. I'd like to turn the time over to Councilmember Thompson to acknowledge some great youth in our community. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was on social media earlier, or late last week, and there was a post in the Mountain Ranch subdivision from a gentleman who was giving accolades to a bunch of 12- and 13-year-olds that took time out of their day to clean up a couple of the parks within their community. And so I wanted to do a shout-out to all of them tonight, to thank them for taking their time to actually go out and clean up. And that was, they're a bunch of, again, they're 12- and 13-year-olds. The kid that headed this up was Derek White, then there was Troy Mosier, Braddock Straight, Jackson Wold, Phyllis Smith, Jesse Wiley, Logan Kirschman, and Tanner Phelps. So a big shout-out, there's a picture of them there. Big shout-out to these kids for taking time out of their day to clean up after what was more than likely adults that can't clean up after themselves. So good job, kids. Keep up the great work in our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson, for that well-deserved recognition, and thank you to those great young men out in the Mountain Ranch housing development. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to take action on the consent agenda. We'll invite Mr. Kevin Christopher to read the consent agenda for the council. Sounds like we may be having some technical difficulties with regard to...
We got it right now?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Kevin, I hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I just saw something pop up here to unmute. Apologize. Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member with citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings is written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for Coco's Power, 540 West Broadway Road. Item 4A, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for pre-sourced mail services for the Business Services Department. Item 4B, act on contract to purchase replacement, rescue, jack systems for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 4C, act on dollar limit increase to the City of Mesa's website upgrades, updates, and annual maintenance hosting for various city departments. Item 4D, act on one-year renewal, the one-year renewal option to the term contract for transportation, amenity, cleaning, and repair services for the Transportation Department. Item 4E, act on one-year renewal, the one-year renewal option to the term contract for transportation, landscape, maintenance, and refurbishment services for the Transportation Department. Item 4F, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for backflow inspection and repairs for the Transportation Department. This purchase is funded by the Highway User Revenue Fund. Item 4G, act on one-year term contract with four years of renewal options for backflow assemblies and related parts for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Water Resources Department. This purchase is funded by 2014 Water and Wastewater Bonds. Item 4H, act on four-year term contract with a one-year renewal option for uninterruptible power supply maintenance, repairs, related services, equipment, and parts purchases for the Water Resources Department. Item 4I, act on contract for Mesa, or excuse me, Mesa Main Library Improvements, Kid Zone. This project's funded by the 2018 Authorized Arts and Culture Bonds. Item 4J, act on contract for fiber network expansion project Phase II, Construction Manager at Risk and Reconstruction Services Contract. This project's funded by 2018 Authorized Public Safety Bonds. Item 4K has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 5A, act on resolution for minor general plan amendment, repealing and replacing the existing Chapter 7 Community Character and the existing Chapter 16 Plan Implementation and Amendment in their entirety and replacing them with exhibits attached to case numbers ZON 20-00735. Item 5B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Salt River, Pima, Maricopa Indian Community for the receipt and distribution of Proposition 202 funds. Item 5C, act on resolution extinguishing a portion of a drain easement on Lot 8 on the final plat for Rock Canyon at La Sendez, 3461 North Ladera Circle. This was requested by the property owner. Item 5D, act on resolution extinguishing a portion of a 20-foot water line easement at 8046 East Ray Road. This was requested by the property owner. Item 6A, act on ordinance regarding ZON 20-00398 for property located west of Alvesta Drive and the north side of University Drive. Rezone and site plan review to allow for development of multiple residents on the site. Item 6B has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 7A, act on subdivision plat reserve at Red Rock located north of Thomas Road and west of Wrecker Road. Item 8A, act on subdivision plat Montaluna located west of Hawes Road on the south side of McKelliffe's Road. And item 8B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into development agreement with Desert Vista 100 LLC relating to approximately 40 acres of land located west of Hawes Road and south of McKelliffe's Road for the purpose of facilitating construction of a public sewer line for single residence development. Mayor and Councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Ms. Mickelson, I know we've previously removed items 4K and 6B from the consent agenda. Are there any other items on the consent agenda where a member of the public has requested to speak?
No additional requests, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. We'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Redia?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. I vote aye as well, so that motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll proceed to the items that were removed from the consent agenda. I believe that we have, I'm going to take these out of order simply because I believe we have some members of the public that are waiting to speak over the telephone, so just to, out of respect for their time, let's, we'll do item 6B first, and then we'll go to item 4K. So 6B is amending Title VI of the Mesa City Code by adding a new Chapter 25 entitled Marijuana Prohibitions prohibiting certain activities and facilities related to marijuana, including recreational marijuana retail establishments except for retail sales by state dual licensees at shared locations, marijuana testing facilities, delivery of marijuana unless delivered by a nonprofit medical marijuana dispensary in accordance with state regulations, and the consumption of marijuana on city property, certain prohibited property, and in vehicles transportation. Ms. Mickelson, I believe we have some requests to speak on this item, is that correct?
We do, Mayor, and the two that we're going to be calling in are not on the phone as of yet.
Okay. I tried to accommodate them by moving them to the first, and I wonder if I threw them a curve. Did you think that they're planning on calling in later in the meeting?
I don't know, that's quite possible. I can either read the other two comments, unless you want to go to the other item.
Do we have their numbers? Can we reach out to them?
Yeah, I can have somebody reach out to them.
So Ms. Mickelson, why don't you go ahead and read the comments that you have to be read, and then if you don't mind, maybe if someone from your office can invite those two individuals to phone in, hopefully we can hear from them during this agenda item.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read these then. The first comment is in support...
I'm on the line.
Oh, we have somebody on the line. Can you say your name?
Hi, my name is Michael Perron.
Okay, Michael, you're here to speak on agenda item 6B, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. With the passing of Proposition 207, we understand the endeavor each city takes to ensure the legislation goes into effect, and in order to establish adult use of marijuana in City of Mesa, governing guidance and transparency and regulations will be paramount. I'm a representative of Green Farms, which is the healing center pharmacy off Hampton. And we are in opposition of the current amendment to the city ordinance. We oppose the prohibition on adult-use marijuana deliveries. Previously, there was an ordinance regarding medical marijuana delivery within city limits. It was amended to allow for medical marijuana licensees to deliver to medical marijuana patients. During the passage of that amendment, it was presented to the city that regardless of the city's prohibition, deliveries of marijuana were already occurring and would continue while the surrounding jurisdictions were the ones doing the deliveries, they were also the ones collecting the taxes. We foresee the same problem with the prohibition of adult-use marijuana deliveries. Understandably, the city may choose to restrict recreational dispensaries to current licensees opting in to be a dual licensee. If needed, we would support language that would limit the total number of marijuana establishments allowed in the city limits. But in conclusion, we do oppose this tax amendment and would ask that new language be added and the amendment drafted to include adult-use marijuana delivery.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else on the line to speak on this agenda item?
Mayor, the other speaker is Arvin Salum, and he indicated that Mr. Perron that just spoke, spoke on his behalf also.
Okay, thank you. So then, Ms. Mickelson, we have two folks that have asked to have a statement read on this item?
Correct, correct. The first one is in support of this item, and his name is Kevin R., and he states, "As a fellow American who speaks for the minority of people who voted against having marijuana legalized here in Arizona, I believe that it is the responsibility of the government and state to regulate recreational marijuana use. There should be strict guidelines in place and laws to prevent people from abusing the system. Far too long, I have seen too many people exploit loopholes here in Arizona to obtain medical marijuana cards for fake or fraudulent injuries. Many of these people have turned around and used this method to their advantage to make untaxed profit by selling the marijuana to people for recreational use on the street. To make matters worse, these people continue to approach younger generations and children to sell their product so that they can expand their customer base. This is unacceptable, so at the very least, if marijuana is going to be available for recreational use, then please regulate it responsibly and fairly, as we Arizona families should not have to worry about strangers coming up to our young children and trying to force drugs on them for whatever is in their piggy banks. Thank you for your time, I appreciate you all, and happy holidays." The second speaker is in opposition to this item, and his name is Eric Burnson, and he states, "Our entire country has faced 50 years of war on drugs after not learning from a failed prohibition of alcohol. The residents of Arizona just voted to start the process of ending this madness for our state. For Mesa to implement any last grasping to the past is just pitiful. Pretending our city is either not full of consenting immature adults, or that some religious group's opinion of another's lifestyle choice is somehow their business is a joke. The same people touting free markets and capitalism are proving they only care about these values when they don't conflict with their own personal interests. A free and open society should allow its residents to determine with their wallets if a business should be in the area. Our city has no shortage of massage parlors and liquor stores, so someone here is being a hypocrite to oppose a plant named marijuana." I did receive a late card, Mayor. They are in opposition, but they do not want their comments read, but their name is Danzen Brinkerhoff.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mickelson, does that complete then all of the requests to speak on this item?
That does, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Would now like to open it up for council discussion. I know that we did have, I thought, a good discussion on this at our last study session, and during the course of that discussion, I think there were some great questions that were asked, and I believe in anticipation that staff might have some answers to some of the questions that were posed last week. Mr. Smith, do either you or Nana want to maybe share any information you may have learned since our last study session?
Sure, Mayor and Council. Let me just give you sort of a brief update on one fact. Mesa's added an additional medical marijuana dispensary in just in the last couple of weeks. So we were talking about 13 last week, two within the county. There's actually 14 within the City of Mesa, and two are within county islands located within the city. So there's a total of actually 14 within the city. We can also provide you some other additional information. Planning has looked at sort of the sort of potential locations of where future dispensaries could be located within the compliance with the separation requirements. The caveat, I would say, is that discussion is, we were intentionally trying to sort of do the planning aspect of this over a longer period of time, because there's a number of factors that affect that, and so the magnitude of the number, it can't be fairly represented until you actually go out and look at the particular sites and see if they even have sort of, many of them don't have existing infrastructure right now that would allow for immediate development. Some might already be developed and not reasonably be potentially used for this particular use, and so we really, you know, if we want to have that discussion, we can, or it can really sort of develop also over time as we look at changing the zoning code in the future.
Okay, thank you. You know, I know that we've got councilmembers who want to be heard on this. If you don't mind, I'll kind of, I'll kick it off, just because I have had some conversations with folks about this and kind of formulated my own thoughts on this, and so I'll just get them out there, because hopefully it'll be beneficial, you know, to the discussion. But last week, when we were talking about this topic, and again, the very reasonable question that some of our councilmembers posed was, given the space requirements for issuing these licenses and per, you know, City of Mesa ordinance, is there really a likelihood or a possibility that we're presented with the possibility of having several more come into our city, or is it really kind of much to do about nothing, because really only a couple or so could be added to the current, you know, number of retailers? So just to, and so that, I thought that was an excellent question, and I've tried to answer that question for myself in the few days that we've had since that meeting. Just to reiterate what Mr. Smith shared with us a minute ago, we have, currently, we have 14 marijuana retailers in the City of Mesa, two in Mesa City Borders and two in County Islands. And as you know, several of our sister cities in the East Valley are contemplating an ordinance the same as the one that we're looking at tonight, which would affect, you know, lock in the medical marijuana dispensaries, and they would become dual licensees and also then start selling recreational marijuana. Scottsdale, Gilbert, Chandler have all indicated they're going to do that. To put it in perspective, Scottsdale currently has four dispensaries, Gilbert has two, Chandler has five, Tempe has five. They've talked about perhaps not adopting this ordinance, but my understanding from that Tempe city staff will tell you that given the space requirements that they have in their community, they believe that the most, only one more retailer could be added to the City of Tempe. So you would have six in Tempe, five in Chandler, two in Gilbert, four in Scottsdale. We currently have 14 in the City of Mesa. I believe that per our request, you know, to answer that question, Mr. Smith and Nana looked at, you know, if we did an overlay of our city map and put in the distance, you know, requirements that where we have to space these retailers apart from one another, what is the most that could be added? And the answer is 12. Now, that might be an overstatement, because, you know, many of the areas that we're talking about are not developed, you know, they're raw land and, you know, there's no infrastructure in those parts of the community, so it would be impossible, you know, in the near term for a marijuana retailer to be established in some of these areas. But at buildout, you know, the most that our city could have, given the status quo of this law, would be an additional 12. So that would take us from 14 to 26. And again, by comparison, our neighboring communities would have between 2 and 6. And if we go forward with this ordinance, that means we will still be subject to our old rules, which allow, which are very liberal in terms of giving approval for medical marijuana dispensaries, which can then become dual licensed dispensers. So just to remind you what you already know, Mesa, we don't require council use permits. If you apply for one of these licenses and your, the site that you've selected is an industrial site and it qualifies as far as zoning goes, you will get a city approval. You're not subject to any political review. So what that means in my mind is that once Prop 207 becomes effective, if it hasn't already, the market for marijuana will increase dramatically, and the competition for these sites is going to increase, and these are going to be, this is going to be a very lucrative business if we see how this is unfolded in other states. So I think there will be, even if we go forward with this ordinance, individuals can come in and apply for a medical dispensary license in an industrial area that's one of these 12, in one of these 12 circles, and we could have, even with this ordinance in place, up to 12 more retailers in our community, which would take us up again to 26. I think that is out of alignment with the East Valley. For Mesa to have between 14 and 26, while Gilbert has two and Chandler has five and Tempe has six, Scottsdale has four, it would, it's too much of a good thing, you know, for those who are in favor of Prop 207. So I believe that, I'm going to vote in favor of this ordinance going forward, because I think it will give us some time to, for the State Department of Health Services to draft the regulations that are called for by Prop 207. We won't have to worry that there will be a rush for these licenses, for these licensed applicants to come into our community, and before we know it, we've got more than is reasonable. And so I'm willing, I will just state that I'm in support of moving forward with this ordinance. Not only that, I think we need to go back and address our previous ordinance to require a council use permit even in medical marijuana dispensary situations, because I think going forward, we are going to have to consider these on a one-by-one basis to see if they fit, and to see if our community is getting out of whack in terms of the number of marijuana dispensaries that we have. So thank you for letting me get that off my chest. Who else would like to speak on this item? Let's start with Councilmember Duff, and then Councilmember Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, first of all, I want to thank all of the citizens for your emails and discussions that I've had in this very short amount of time in which we've contemplated a decision on this, and so thank you. But after much consideration and deliberation, I've ultimately decided that it's best to err on the side of being too cautious, and I do support this ordinance. After these matters unwind and DHS defines its rules on the retail and social equity licenses, we can loosen the ordinance restrictions if need be. It would be almost impossible to tighten them after the fact. I've received some emails and concerns about, you know, the strengthening of the black market due to lack of availability and such like that, but, and openly as far as, you know, those who hold the dual licenses. But I think there is some mitigation also by the ability of individuals to grow their own and have their own, if that was important to them as far as availability. I think where I stand, I am going to support this ordinance and want to be cautious as we move into this new realm, and as we go forward, we can always loosen it, but we can't reverse it. So I am supporting this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff. Councilmember Luna?
Thank you, Councilmember Duff. I was just going to repeat exactly what you said. I think this ordinance allows us to create a systematic way of providing marijuana to our community members, but we need to have some kind of organized way of doing it. So I appreciate staff coming up with this recommendation, so I'm going to be in support of this ordinance. We also need to see what the Department of Health Services, DHS decides in terms of the social equity, and who qualifies for that, and how it's going to, how it's going to be worked out in the City of Mesa. I too am very cautious about having many of these sites throughout the City of Mesa, so I think council use permit is paramount when we look at this moving forward. So I'm going to go ahead and support the ordinance, and time will tell whether we alter or make any changes to our past ordinance as we move forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Council, other comments?
I've got a comment.
Jeremy?
You know, I just want, obviously, I'm on the minority side of this decision, which I already understand, or else, you know, this issue wouldn't be coming before council. But, you know, I think that we have to recognize the fact that it's supply and demand, right? And so you have to ask yourself the question, if we didn't have so many, for lack of a better term, potheads living in the City of Mesa and smoking marijuana, then there wouldn't be demand for anybody to set up shop in the first place. So, you know, I think it's a bit counterintuitive to limit the number of sites in the first place, and, you know, the other thing that I want to talk about, that, you know, we've had this war on drugs for god knows, you know, how many decades, and it's such a failed mentality, right? Like, we have liquor stores and gas stations selling alcohol on every single corner in our community, and, you know, just freely loading up people on alcohol, which is the bigger cause, or the bigger demise of our society, if you will. Or, you know, look at the legalization of opioids through CVS Pharmacy, or Walgreens, or any of these places, right? It's caused the biggest issue in our community, which is opioid abuse. You know, any day of the week, I would rather run into an impaired driver on marijuana rather than, you know, opioids or alcohol. So I'm obviously going to be voting against this, but, you know, I think we're just trying to delay the inevitable, in my opinion. You know, the people are speaking across the country, right? Like, they think marijuana, the war on drugs has failed, it's not legitimate, so I'll be opposing this problem.
Thank you, Councilmember Whitaker. Other comments, yes? Vice Mayor Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Even though I'm personally opposed to any marijuana in our society, it's not going to change my opinion, but having an ordinance that strengthens our laws as a community, I think is very important. In fact, I wouldn't even want to drive into any impaired driver, whether they're on marijuana, alcohol, or otherwise. And regardless, we have an obligation to protect our residents and our community, so having these dual licenses, I think, is important. But I think it's important to note that we have the ability to tweak this ordinance down the road, correct? But I think it's important to note that we have the ability to tweak this ordinance down the road, correct? So with that said, there was a caller who mentioned they wanted to make an amendment about delivering, I believe, recreational marijuana, and whether that would be entertained or not. I just want to give them due process and know that, hey, we did listen to you, but we're not going to change it at this point. And so I'll be supporting this and moving forward with passing this ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilmember Duff?
Just to comment on the delivery, from what I understand, and Mr. Smith can correct me, but by reading the Prop 207, delivery is not allowed on marijuana until 2023, and those rules haven't been written yet. So even if we didn't prohibit it at this time, it still would be prohibited at the state level.
Sorry, we're getting a little feedback there, Jen. That was such a good comment, we wanted to hear it over again, so we hit the repeat button. Thank you. Mr. Smith, do you have anything to add to, in response to the public comment on the delivery issue? Is there any insight or offers?
Yeah, picking up on Vice Mayor Freeman's and Councilmember Duff's statement, yeah. In the future, we can modify this ordinance, and you're correct, Councilmember Duff, I also read that provision within the proposition too. And so the regulations are forthcoming from DHS on that regard. And so after those come forward, we could reassess.
Oh, I apologize. Councilmember, any additional discussion on this item? All right, is there a motion to proceed? Thank you. Councilmember Luna makes a motion for approval, seconded by Vice Mayor Freeman. We'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker?
Nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Haredia?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. I vote aye as well, so that motion passes six ayes and one nay. Next item on our agenda is Item 4K. I will read what this is, for those who might not know. This is the Studios at Mesa City Center's second guaranteed maximum price. We had a staff presentation on this at our last study session. Council, before we go to a motion or a vote, is there any discussion or any additional information you'd like on this item? All right, hearing none. Mr. Freeman, do you make a motion for approval?
No, sir, I want to make a comment, Mayor.
Oh, I apologize, Mr. Freeman. Thank you. Please, please.
You know, as I stated last week, I thought it was important and imperative that we facilitate higher education in our community. And these are just one of the buildings, this is an asset that we have in our community. As I stated, as a young man, and yourself, Mayor, we went there as young kids. It was the greatest thing in Mesa, having a brand-new library. And now we're renovating it with dollars that will help prepare the next generations of students to become whatever they want to be. And I feel like, great, we need to have this building that's underutilized. We're going to retain its historical value, and people will be able to see this building. I think Mr. McVeigh said it was built in 1959. Today's 2020, soon to be 21, and I think it'll live on for another, and I say, 100 years or more. And who knows what the next councils will have to decide with the building. But again, I think our support of higher education and our partnership with ASU is very important, because it will help generate a whole new class of people and students within downtown Mesa. But they will go out in society and be able to have their own families and be able to say, "I came to downtown City of Mesa, and I got my education here." So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Councilmember Luna?
I'm also going to be supporting this motion, simply because I've been in education over 40 years now. And one of the things that we try to cultivate is innovation and creativity. Now, just imagine a student here in the City of Mesa, from Mesa Public Schools, from Gilbert, from wherever you're at, going to a center where you're allowed to be creative. You have the ability to innovate, to do something positive, not only for yourself but for the community. This is exactly what this place is going to do. And I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward for what ASU is going to be doing, working with these kids. But it's not just open for kids, it's for everyone in our community. If you've got a great idea, if you need a place to meet, this is going to spark this kind of activity. So I definitely will be supporting this. I think this is a positive thing for our community, and I can hardly wait to see what happens next. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Luna. Other comments? You know, I'd just like to, I can't help but let my enthusiasm, you know, show after being provoked by Mr. Freeman and Mr. Luna. This is, this building is going to be, was and will be, again, greatly loved in our community. I just, I feel like a kid on Christmas morning at the anticipation of seeing this building come online, seeing our historic post office come online, seeing the City Plaza Park and the ASU facility. I mean, a year and a half from now can't come too fast, because these are going to be buildings that are going to be, that are part of our, they're the legacy buildings in our community and legacy locations, and they're going to be very well-used, very well-received, very much points of pride in our community. So I will be enthusiastic in supporting this motion as well. All right, any other comments, Council? Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
I should chime in. I'm very thrilled to have this building in the middle of our city. And it is not being done for the benefit of ASU. It is being constructed and used for the benefit of our community. ASU does not receive any financial, you know, advantage to have this. And it is only for our community and building entrepreneurship and the resiliency of our city, so I support this, of course.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, is there a motion to proceed? Thank you. Motion made by Vice Mayor Freeman, seconded by Councilmember Luna. We'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitaker?
Nay.
Thank you. Councilmember Haredia?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Thank you. I vote aye as well, so that motion passes six ayes and one nay. Item nine on our agenda for this meeting is items from citizens present. Ms. Mickelson, have, do we have any requests to speak under this agenda item?
No requests, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Before we adjourn this evening, we'd like to take a moment to recognize Councilmember Jeremy Whitaker, who will conclude his term as a council member before our next meeting in January. Councilmember Whitaker and his wife, Rashana, started their family during his period of time in office, and welcome to his son. During his tenure, Jeremy also supported a voter-approved bond that will enable new children's library experience to be expanded and improved in our community. And so, in honor of his service to the City of Mesa, we are dedicating a new series of four books with a STEM theme, one for each year of his service to Mesa. The books will become a part of the new learning experience for many generations of children to come. Each book will carry the following inscription. "This book is dedicated to Councilmember Jeremy Whitaker, who served Mesa from January 2017 to January 2021. Councilmember Whitaker was a member of the governing body that approved a new children's experience, built in 2021 at Mesa's main library. STEM-related learning, which we all know is science, technology, engineering, and math, has been an interest and a passion for Councilmember Whitaker, as we all know. Jeremy, we want to give you a thank you, a heartfelt thanks for giving of yourself, your time and your expertise to the City of Mesa. We appreciate your dedication and commitment to the City of Mesa and to our residents. And of course, we wish you well with your next steps." Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thanks, John. I just want to say that it's been an honor serving the citizens of Mesa. You know, some of the staff members that I've worked with are extremely intelligent. They have, you know, a certain level of integrity and honesty. It's an honor working with them. And, you know, I wish Mesa the best. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeremy. That concludes the items on our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Councilmember Luna, seconded by Councilmember Thompson. We will do a voice vote, so please unmute your microphones. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned, and happy holidays.